And early voting has been going well. And that was, that was some pretty exciting news. I think that's, that's a help during this pandemic. Schools were meeting this week to discuss some of the tipping points that they would look at. If we did have a significant increase in COVID cases. And there was obviously a lot of planning and discussion around Halloween events for this weekend. So everything from the library to the schools to Carlisle's fantastic plan. Put together by the Carlisle Cheer Committee to ensure that Halloween goes off safely. Without a hitch and with an eye towards a lot of fun. So if I could leave everybody with one, one closing thought is that if you have not seen the Carlisle Cheer Committee's website and the organization involved in trick or treating. Please take a look at that. It's a great plan. There are still some spots open, some neighborhoods that are still taking guests. And I have the assurance, or we all have the assurance of Carlisle Cheer that if we'll meet everyone's needs, we'll make sure that every family in Carlisle has an opportunity to have some fun on Halloween. With that, Dr. Lewis, if any of the members of the board or anyone has any questions, glad to feel them.
Oh, I would, I would like to say that the swap meet on Saturday went off beautifully well. Thanks to the Cheer Committee who did a fantastic job on that. And if Halloween stacks up to their usual competence, we'll have a great Halloween. So it looks like it could be a great success. Thank you. No questions here. Anybody else have questions?
I'd just like to add two quick things. One, just in case anybody's listening that wants to still sign up is that it is a three to six P M. Trick or treating time on Saturday. And this is a plan that, you know, went through review by the Board of Health and the Local Emergency Preparedness Committee and lots of others. And, and we determined that a daytime event in the afternoon, ending promptly at six was both a really safe way to do it and also would still allow for, you know, lots of fun trick or treating. So I just want to put that out there. And I would like to maybe for parents that are listening that have teenagers to be sure they know that they are more than welcome to trick or treat in the neighborhood, you know, and go on to that signup genius at the Cheer Project and pick a time that you want to go out in the neighborhood, but that we are asking everybody to stop their trick or treating promptly at six P M. And the other comment I want to make is just back to the the new COVID cases and just to mention along with what the chief said that, you know, thanks to our, the Board of Health nurse, the contact tracing has been done, you know, for the, for the family, the household. And that's all completed. And then the, the one other individual that tracing, I think, was completed today. So that's been done and taken care of in a great, you know, in a very prompt and thorough way.
Thank you, Barney. Yeah, that's again, reiterating again, Halloween is for Carlisle residents. And we ask everybody, please be done by six o'clock in the evening so we can have a safe and happy Halloween. So thank you. Anything, any other questions or comments for the LEPC? Hearing none. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your efforts as usual. Fantastic time. The LEPC, you know, was normally set up to handle storms and, you know, a 24 hour emergency when trees fell across people's yards and that sort of thing. And getting the ambulance was out. Nobody had ever anticipated we would be going on for eight months, but here we are. And, and Chief Fisher's done a wonderful job of leading that effort. So thank you. All right. Recreation Commission is, who is presenting for that?
I think Courtney's on the call, I know.
True. Both of us, Courtney and myself.
All right. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Alan, for having us. We'll try, we'll try and be swift with this presentation. I do notice that Dave Modell and Luke are not here, but they're actually the two that have been well informed. David had attended a different presentation.
David has been on the call.
He is, yeah.
I'm here. I'm here.
Oh, there you are. How are you?
I'm listening now. I'm well familiar with the presentation.
Good. Do I need to share my screen or should I rely on you to just thumb through the meeting back in materials?
You're certainly welcome to.
Yeah, you should be able to do that. You should be able to share your materials.
Let me go ahead and, and do that. Make sure I picked the right one. Okay, great. And I will take this through about half this presentation and then hand it off to Courtney. So we're the Carlisle Recreation Commission, which you probably recall, you know, we serve at your, at your leisure. We were essentially a board that's appointed by you and reports to you. And we're here to present about our proposal for a dog park to apply for a grant for a dog park. So a dog park, what is a dog park? It's essentially it's a fenced in area, often with a path or other amenities. And it can range from, you know, elaborate infrastructure to very sparse and natural. There are many of them in, in Massachusetts. So why are we proposing a dog park? Well, Carlisle has a lot of dogs. You know, I think four sixty something was the number we got in the winter from our, from the town clerk. And, you know, that's, that's even more than we have schoolchildren, I believe. And a dog park makes both their dogs, both the dogs and their owners very happy. You know, one of the reasons in the Recreation Commission that it fits so well for our purpose is we're often seeking multi-generational recreational amenities and opportunities because much of our recreation programming and infrastructure is really focused on youth and the most active communities. And the dog park presents something that can go up and down the generational spectrum. Another reason is we also have a little bit of a problem over at Banta Davis with, with what we are maintaining in terms of our fields with dogs. Now, for lack of a better word, pooping or digging up baselines or being a little bit of a nuisance to our field infrastructure. You know, because owners need a place to go with them, a place where they can let them go off leash. And so this is a little bit of an opportunity for us to steer the activity away from problems that we've had. You know, soccer players getting dog waste on themselves and baselines and other, you know, infrastructure getting torn up by dogs. And, you know, one question I get a lot when I give this presentation is, you know, what Carlisle has a, has vast open spaces and, you know, tons of trails and so forth. So why would we need a dog park in a place that has so much open space? And the reasons are, you know, we have, I was part of the dog bylaw committee. And we spent a lot of time talking about the leash laws and whether or not we would have a leash law. As you recall, we ended up with a rule that basically requires dogs to be on call and, you know, basically responding to a recall command, but not all dogs are well enough trained for that in town. So this allows a place for dog owners to, to take their dogs and allow them to be off leash and to, you know, conform to the rules. It helps people train their dogs for recall and socialize their dogs to other dogs. It helps owners who have over energetic dogs who they can't really take on the trails or maybe can't, you know, do enough hiking to keep active. It helps our less able dog owners, you know, not every dog owner is able to hike, you know, miles of rugged trails with a dog. And it helps, you know, for those that have dogs during the winter to exercise and care for those dogs. So lots of reasons why we favor putting together a dog park. Where we plan to do it is at Banta Davis. And there's a little bit of a picture here. We have land that is a great fit for this already. It was vetted as a, as good land for field construction. Back when the proposal to expand the field infrastructure got narrowly voted down, I think that was in 2004. But during that, the land was assessed as having no ledge and fairly level and good drainage and an excellent location for a future field, but we're proposing it for a dog park. This is an area that is close to the, or adjacent to, and I have another picture that describes it better. But basically down on the third baseline of the, of the softball field that is at Upper Banta. A place where there are really no butters, there's good parking. It's close to where we have the problems with dog owners taking, allowing their dogs to go now. You know, the fields that are being affected by disobedient dogs. It's, you know, a good amenity there for parents who find themselves at a soccer or softball game. Maybe a sibling is going to go and play with the dogs. It's a good community infrastructure and gathering place already. And it's also a good spot in, in the sense that your Banta is often thought of as a place for, you know, maybe a future school expansion or a site for, you know, because there's very little municipal land in Carlisle that could be used. And a dog park has, is not a huge investment. It's not something that couldn't be relocated if we needed to do a future school or there was some other use of Banta that, you know, could, could be called, that it could be called upon for. So just more specifically, more detailed view of where we would have it. You can see, and if you can see my cursor, here is the softball field. Here's the parking lot. There's a volleyball court here. This rendering was done by a friend of mine at Fisher Design Group. He did a lot of the work at the high school athletic complex. Dave Fisher. The dog parks typically have a large, large dog area and a small dog area. The way that he drew it in this rendering. You know, the large dog park rendering is here, which you can see is smaller than a softball field, but maybe two thirds the size of that. And then a small dog area, which is probably about, would be about half that, I think, drawn here perhaps, but a bit bigger than it would be. This is not, no final rendering. This is a constant rendering for us to, to make our grant application, which Courtney will explain.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Courtney Bittolari. For everyone that doesn't know me, I live on Fisk Street with my husband and daughter who is five. Not yet in Carlisle School. We're still kind of doing whatever until that time happens. And I have two dogs. We have Zoe, who's much older, not great on a leash. So it's hard for us to, you know, go to places like the Bog and make sure she's being respectful to others. So the dog park's just appealing to me as a person. And we also got a COVID puppy. We were one of those people that adopted a rescue and that's Jackie. So she's a little one that can really benefit from socialization as well, other than her cranky big sister. So that's enough about me. Let's talk about the big scary question of how we're going to afford this. So what we're trying to do, and you know, we got interrupted by COVID. We had started this process prior, but then COVID happened. So it kind of got pushed. But what we're trying to do is apply for a grant from the Stanton Foundation. The Stanton Foundation was created by Frank Stanton, who was a longtime president of CBS. And part of this is just his legacy. So they don't only supply grants to dog parks. They do a lot of canine welfare in general. So things like canine unit grants, education for healthcare providers for dogs, mobile adoption vans, all kinds of grants for things like that. And dog parks just happens to be one of the items that they fund. So again, just part of his mission to encourage that canine health. And they support the development of those enclosed dog parks that you just saw on the slide before. So nothing open, free for all, the stipulation has to be enclosed. It's pretty great to keep the dogs contained. So far, there's been about 38 grant recipients under this program, including the one in Billerica that's fairly new and the one in Chelmsford that is very, very popular. This number might've gone up since, I believe, Natick and Auburn, if I recall correctly, also were recipients, recent recipients too. So we've got a good healthy sample of there of this being a success in other neighboring towns. Next slide, please. So right now, we are in the design phase. There are essentially two large stages of how this works. The design grant is where we are today. That funds 100% of the cost to design a park. And then the second phase is the construction phase. So once you go through the design grant phase, you move on to the construction grant phase, which funds 90% of the costs of this project. And like I mentioned, right now, we're planning for the application for the design grant. And the first, well, one of the major critical steps to obtaining a design grant is an assurance letter that you guys also received a copy of. And let's go to the next slide, please. So construction costs, these are some financial considerations, construction costs. So until we have a still we have, until we've done the design study, we don't know for sure what the costs are going to be. The Stanton Foundation has a ton of information on their website and they give you a range from about 120 to $250,000 is the kind of ballpark area for a dog park cost. So if we look at that, you know, based on what the construction grant covers, the implication to the town would be around 12 to $25,000 to get one built. Assuming that the costs remain stable in our draft budget that you'll see in a minute. And we can also leverage the Community Preservation Act to acquire the portion that Carlisle would be responsible for. And then in terms of maintenance costs, which is another major financial consideration, it doesn't seem like there's going to be a huge maintenance cost here. There will be some, but not, not monumental. We have an estimation between $3,000 and $5,000 annually. And just as a benchmark, Banta Davis is about $100,000 annually to maintain. And here's the draft budget. This was supplied in partnership with Fisher Design. You can kind of see a basic line item list of what this would look like. With the total estimated being 130, $183,000. So our estimated cost would be 10% of that ballpark. That's sort of what this could look like. Again, we don't know for sure, but this is kind of a spec based on some details that we know so far. Drew, do you want to add anything more to that? I know this slide is sort of new.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, they added a, the Stanton Foundation, since we got started this year, added a requirement that we supply a draft budget as part of our application. So, so we put this together for that purpose, but it's nothing that we are bound to once we get a design grant.
Thank you. On the next slide, it kind of just goes over why we're here. So, you know, we want to tell you about this cool thing that we want to do, but we also need some support. Not a huge level, but in order for us to submit our assurance letter, we just kind of need a vote of support from the Board of Selectmen. This is only for the letter, for the application for the design grant. It doesn't bind you to anything else. We don't think this requires a vote. It does require Tim to sign and attest to certain things that I'll go over on the next page. But whether you guys take a vote, that's, that's up to you. And then, like I mentioned on a couple of slides before, the copy of the assurance letter was shared, but let us know if you'd like it reshared. If you want to take a peek at. In the next.
I think we like go over this one. So, you know, what we're testing to in the assurance letter. Do you want to carry it or?
Oh, yeah, sure. I didn't know if you were taking over. Okay. Yeah. So the assurance letter is basically from the town administrator assuring the Stanton Foundation several things. They provide a checklist of things they want you to cover in your assurance letter. Basically, the plan has been well communicated to relevant stakeholders. We'll go over what that means in a minute. The land is in fact available to us for this purpose and that the town can meet that commitment of the $10,000 percentage, of the 10% of the hard construction costs. So essentially relevant bodies and residents and butters, we have done this work so far. So we've made presentations to the school committee that was back in March. I think it was literally the week before the pandemic kind of hit us. We presented to F and COM Planning Board and now you here tonight. We've also informed committees of our plans, the liaisons to Master Steering, CPC, Board of Health and Open Space Committees. There's been a lot of articles published in the mosquito on several occasions. We've held, you know, several open meetings during that comm where this was an agenda item. We've held discussions with the town's dog control officer, Larry Sorley and Tim Goddard. And we've consulted with many enthusiastic dog owners and a resident professional dog walker. And the overall sentiment so far is people are pretty supportive and excited about it. I think first, you know, we sometimes get met with the, do we really need a dog park? But when people kind of find out the process and how it could be funded, there seems to be a lot of support here. That's just some anecdotal observations from me. And then some other questions here. Safety liability. I guess, Drew, do we, do we have a position on this? I, this, it's been a while since we last presented this deck, but I don't know.
That's fine. I don't, I don't think we think there's any safety concern, any new ones presented by anything, you know, by a dog park relative to what Carlisle faces right now. Tim Goddard researched with our carriers, whether there be any additional insurance liability or issues. Down none. I wouldn't speak for that if we want to elaborate further. You know, we don't know at this point what materials we would use or what the design would look like. I mean, that would be a community process. We would want a lot of input about that.
The Stanton Foundation, sorry, the Stanton Foundation also publishes data on what dog parks do that have received this grants. They have all kinds of cool new dashboards that are actually new since we started this process that kind of show like the number of dog parks in the area that have selected the peystone, for example. So you can kind of get a benchmark of what others are doing, which is pretty great to know.
We also don't know what restrictions and rules we might want to put in place. And, you know, we think, when we think about the design process, we think we would want a, you know, interdisciplinary or cross, cross committee group formed with your input and suggestion to come up with the design and all those other parameters. We wouldn't just make this a REIT com project. We would want inputs from a broader group and we look to you for what that might look like. Yeah. So hopefully we have your support. Vito wants it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Go ahead. Open it up now to the other members of the select board. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. Am I?
Go ahead, Barney.
Let's see. Yeah, no, I guess I'm not muted. Great. Well, you know, I applaud you all for taking the initiative and trying to move forward with something like this. I'm a dog owner myself, so very much understand what you're describing. Yeah. So I have a couple of different questions. One is, so you mentioned, did you say that there are more than 600 dog licenses issued in town?
I think it was March, it was 463 was the number I think I got.
463, okay.
We actually think there are, or the, the town clerk at that time felt like there were hundreds of unregistered dogs.
Yeah. So. So how have you determined the demand for this? I know you've, you know, you've been to different boards and I understand that, you know, you had some open discussions at the REIT com, but how have you measured the demand or interest for something like this?
You know, we have, it's anecdotal. We don't have a quantification of that. We haven't sent a survey to all of the dog owners or, or anything like that. I'm not sure how we would reach them all. In the past, when REIT com has done surveys, we've gotten really poor participation rates. I don't know that a pandemic would make that better. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult to measure, Barney. But we do see that the dog parks in other towns are very popular and get a lot of fanfare and, and support. So, you know, I rely on that.
Yeah. And tell me a little bit more about your thinking about the maintenance, because that three to 5,000 seems kind of low. If you, again, I don't know what's involved in the maintenance of a dog park, but I have been to different dog parks. And I have to say, if they aren't maintained properly, they are really awful.
Definitely an attrition in usage when they're not. And that's, there's a recommendation in the Stanton Foundation about a couple of things. And we've discussed kind of partnering with DPW. Drew, I don't know if we're still thinking about that. Also, the Stanton Foundation recommends a type of trash barrel that's kind of compostable, really large, doesn't require a ton of emptying. So just kind of tips like that to keep the maintenance lower. The dog park is intended to be a year round thing. So we do have to kind of consider what that would look like. The Stanton Foundation recommends providing the little waste bags and the receptacle for those. So that's something we do need to consider here as well. And then other maintenance things like raking the peystone or adding more things like that. And just general things like fences. So Drew, I don't know if we have approached DPW about it or if we plan to, or if it would be covered under kind of the Banta.
I didn't ask DPW when I came up with that estimate. I asked our fields contractor if they had to, had to keep it clean and to blow it out. You know, and, and generally maintain it. You know, so the people who go and mow the fields like twice a week and also do like the fertilizer and so forth, they're there most often. And they said that they would have no problem going in and cleaning it up. And if it was a big problem, like if, if dog owners aren't cleaning up after themselves, then we're going to have an enforcement issue, right? We're not going to just let that be the, you know, because if you had a contractor had, you had to treat it, you know, like a, like cleaning up a sewer, obviously three to five is low. Yeah. So, you know, we, we would need some enforcement. We have found that dog owners enforce for each other when there is a problem. So when we've had the problems over by the track at the Banta soccer field, we've been contacting a group of local dog walkers and to say, yeah, we're having a problem. Can you please, you know, pitch in and help? I think in a dog park, it's even easier because, you know, the materials are such that you see the waste much easier. One of the problems that happens in the fields is those dogs are running off. And if they, you know, take a deuce behind first base, nobody notices. Yeah. So until the first baseman shows up. So, you know, I think it's more easily maintained. It's easier for a dog owner to see what happens in a dog park, especially when everybody's together more socially.
Yeah, that, that kind of culture definitely helps regulate the behavior there.
Yeah, yeah. And I saw a little bit in the letter, I guess, the one that Stanton wants to see about private fundraising. There was something about reporting any private fundraising. What are your thoughts about that?
Well, we, we thought that we would apply for the CPA funds for the 10% portion. And I think, as I recall, the Stanton Foundation just has a lot of, you know, their concern isn't that you do, they're not necessarily encouraging the private fundraising. They just want to be sure that if you do private fundraising, that the signature, you know, the signatories or, you know, that they don't, they don't want to be associated with dog parks that, you know, are sponsored by Chevron or something, you know.
Okay.
So that, that was more their concern, which is why in our letter, we said, you know, if it is, if it is done with CPA funds, that we would need to put up a sign acknowledging that because that's the statute.
Okay. And a couple more things. One, so I noticed, I saw it somewhere in the presentation that the approximate size is something like two acres. Is that right? Or is that sort of, I mean, is that in the ballpark of what, or the dog park of what?
Feet to acres, you know, like the, the big dog park is probably like an area of 150 by 200 feet.
I have an average from the Stanton Foundation. So it says around 34,000 average square feet. I don't know what that translates to acres, but that's the data that they've published.
Yeah, two acres is about 85,000 square feet.
And how much do they, how much does Stanton recommend?
34.3 thousand.
Yeah. About one acre.
Yeah, about an acre.
Thanks.
And so you've already determined that there's that much space in that area that you've identified.
Yeah. There was, when they surveyed that, there was room for two athletic fields. So, which would be twice what we need.
Yeah. And then just tell me, what kind of response have you gotten from the different committees that you have presented to?
Like I said, we, like Courtney said, you know, lots of support. I will say, you know, there is a, like a sort of 10% faction of dog park. We don't need a dog park, kind of, you know, classic sort of Carlisle. It's kind of, it kind of reminds me Barney of when we put in the paths. There was a very vocal minority about the pass, but most everybody else nodded their heads and said, we need, you know, this is a really good idea. I imagine if the dog park were not funded by the Stanton Foundation, there would be, you know, more vocal opposition to it. But, but I, you know, the reason we went, the funny thing about how we came across the Stanton Foundation was not like, we saw the Stanton Foundation and thought, hey, let's get a dog park. We were trying to figure out how we were going to get a dog park because we've had this problem and we've been trying to solve it with respect to how we're maintaining our fields. And the dogs running rampant over them, because we had tried to close the fields to the dogs. You may recall some articles about that. And in the process of researching dog parks and what it might cost and what it might take, I came across.
Yeah.
Have you considered it all? I mean, we've had issues in the past with out of town people. Is that a concern at all?
You know, that, you know, it's something that we could seek to enforce if it was a problem. You know, honestly, it's probably between Billerica and Chelmsford right now, you know, Carlilians are going and using those dog parks. I know lots of people who are doing that. Lots of the people we've spoken to. So there's a little bit of a reciprocity that we might tolerate, I think. So there's a little bit of a reciprocity that we might tolerate, I think, depending upon how big the usage is.
Yep.
Right.
Got it. And among the, this is probably a rhetorical question, but among the committees she was attached, how did the finance committee react?
Oh, they were favorable.
Good. Wow.
Lynn, only Lynn Lipinski was not in favor, but everybody else was quite positive about it.
Very good. Okay. That's, that's.
A brief question for Luke, being the chair of the CPA. What do you think the chances of CPAs being a supportive of grant application for order of 18K for a dog park, Luke?
Yeah, I think we've actually discussed it in the past and, you know, it's an allowable use. So it's not really our decision. It would go to town.
This is allowable. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it's allowable. Yeah. A lot of other towns have actually done it. Yeah. Okay. No, I mean, you know, it's the whole thing that CPA really strives for too, is to leverage funds, you know, so to get 90% of it paid for, I think is, is phenomenal, you know?
Okay.
So we will not pay to maintain.
Right. That's.
Yeah. But yeah, it's the maintenance piece, right? And if, if that can be, you know, yeah, you just, you know, you need responsible people and be able to police each other. So.
David?
Yeah, I'll chime in, you know, because I was actually on school committee when they presented and school owns Banta.
Yeah.
And school committee at that time was supportive. So just so you know that, you know, that it's not really in the school's portfolio about dog parks, but certainly the use of Banta is. And it was deemed a worthy use of Banta.
And they took a vote, actually. They took a vote, actually, just recently to formally endorse.
Great.
And, and Drew, what's the timing or Courtney, what's the timing on this? You, you put in the grant for the first phase and then assuming that goes well. And then we would go for the second phase. I mean, how, what do you see is?
That's a great question. There's no timeline on like response from Stanton that they have published. So I don't know how long the review process would be for the letter. But I don't, I don't know if we have like a set date in mind of when we want to physically break ground here. I think we're just kind of taking it step by step. Because we still have the whole construction grant phase to get through as well. So we're just, I, I'm personally just trying to take the bits and pieces that I can work on. I don't know, George, I don't know, think we, we don't have an aggressive timeline that I know, but.
Just, just aggressive in terms of getting it in this year, our application, because we know that they, they cap how many grants they accept. It seems that they've never reached their cap, but they've only been doing this for a few years. And I suspect that other towns have caught on. There are a lot of towns in Massachusetts. And I think that if we can get it in, in 2020, we stand a better chance because I don't think a lot of towns will have had their act together.
Yeah. And, and we're ready to submit the letter. And then after that, we're, we're in their system, hopefully.
And, and would you anticipate that something might go before town meeting next spring? Or are you, are you thinking probably not till 2022?
I, I think if we, you know, we've, we've been having some fall special meetings on a pretty regular, regular basis lately, right? So I, I can imagine that if we have one next year in 2021, that we might be ready to present then, but not, I think by April.
Okay.
So it might be, we might be off, off cycle if we want to be aggressive or we can, you know, we can be a town meeting in 2022 if we want to be on cycle. But, yeah, we don't know if, if we submit this thing next week and they come back with a design grant and, and we can get a design together in February. It seems like a pretty aggressive timeline, but not infeasible.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Now, we, we don't need a formal vote on this. I take it, but would like to get a indication of support. Tim can sign the letter. So people for, against?
I for.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with Tim signing the letter. I, I just do want to, you know, remind us all that, that, and I know you have said this in your presentation, but that it's not a, you know, that the board is not voting to approve the actual dog park itself, but we are supporting the, trying to get the design.
Application.
Explore it further. Yeah.
Luke?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm for it.
Okay, me too. So we'll, I'll say this to take this as a indication of select board support. And if you'll provide the letter to Tim, we will ask him to sign it.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
To, to, one quick thing about the letter, just to, um, just because we just passed this and it's a good reminder of that we're now known as the select board rather than the board of select.
I did not know that Barney.
Yes, town meeting just made the change.
Pretty good about not forgetting that.
Now, you know, I was thinking, so we're no longer the BOs, I guess, right?
We are not.
We're the SB.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's not SOB.
Better be in the, better be in the BS.
Yeah, yeah. Or SOB. Right. Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation and good luck.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is municipal aggregation and I will ask, unmute for Bob Zog.
Yeah. So I think we also have Mark Capadona and Denise Allard on as well from Colonial Power. And I think, Tim, the main thing we wanted to do tonight was update you on where we are with the two pieces of outreach information around our community choice aggregation, one being the letter of notification that will go out, I think at the end of November to alert customers who are currently involved in the CCA of, of the change to the new contracts. So they're aware of the new options and the new pricing. And had the energy task force has had, has gone back and forth with Colonial Power on the wording. And with this particular notification, the wording is, you know, as Colonial Powers explained to us several times, the wording is very, very prescribed by the, by the DPU. And so there's really very little leeway. My, in my view, I think the most important decision on this notification letter or the select board is to decide whether Carlisle wants to send this out ourselves or whether we want Colonial Power to do it. I, I know when we last discussed CCA, before we had the contract signed, I thought I heard a fair bit of interest in having this go out on Carlisle letterhead by Carlisle and a Carlisle envelope, just to help avoid the confusion. And Colonial Power is very open to that, but I think there are some requirements, unfortunately, that we still need to meet. And I don't know whether our letterhead and our envelopes would meet the requirements or could be made to meet the requirements. So, first I wanted to, first thing we should probably do is confirm whether this, how, if the select board does in fact want this to go out on our letterhead and our envelopes. And then second, check with Colonial Power and see whether, you know, we can meet the requirements with, with our stationary.
Yeah. I mean, I think Bob, the, my own, my own feeling is if at all possible, I would like to have it go out on Carlisle letterhead in our envelope, if only to differentiate it from the kind of commercial solicitations we get every now and then from other companies trying to sell us things. And it would give it a legitimacy that otherwise might not be apparent to all the people receiving the letter, even though Colonial certainly has full confidence of everybody here. But I think to the people who may be wary of it, or who might just throw it in the trash on a town letterhead would, would reduce the probability of that happening.
Yeah, I'd agree.
The, one of the implications that Colonial Power has pointed out that any addresses that kick out, if it has our return address, obviously those letters will come back to us. I, and I, I don't really know why, why the addresses would be, would be bad, because I think they're coming from ever source. And I think they'd have to be, you know, they're sending, these are the billing addresses they're using. Good. But that is, you know, one, one minor factor as well. Denise, so Mark, do you want to add anything or correct anything I just said about the envelope and the letterhead?
No, no. So I think, this is Denise. Hi. So I think in terms of the, the addresses, let's start there, right? So it's, it's utility grade data. So folks are getting electronic bills and they don't keep their mailing addresses current, you know, you do run the risk of mailing addresses being outdated because folks are just going online to get their bills. So that is one of the concerns with the utility grade data in terms of the addresses. In terms of the town letterhead for the envelope and the letter, we, we have done that with other communities. We've not had the communities do the mailing themselves. Typically what happens, City of Pittsfield, City of Lowell, they send over electronic letterhead. I don't know if you have electronic letterhead. So like for Lowell, for instance, we have a town, a city seal that bleeds off the top right, top left corner of the letter, and then there's the, the logo at the very bottom of the second page. So it can be placed on the, the digital copy, you know, with our print vendor. So we can, we can certainly get it in there. That's an, that's an alternative to the, the city, I mean, the town rather, sorry, um, doing the mailing themselves and us sending everything over to the town and the town having to absorb the responsibility of doing the mailing and still using town letterhead and envelope. I don't know if that's an option.
Do, do you happen to remember, didn't we do it on town letterhead last time we did this for the, or we did it on the other?
It was, it was public power that was the winning vendor and they have a little sale, a little more salesy than we would have otherwise liked. So it, I believe it had a window and a perforated.
Actually three windows.
Three windows on the, on, on the envelope. So it, it really looked more salesy than it should have. We're not very fond of that. We're, we're happy to use, if, if there is a, an option to use the town letterhead through electronic, we'll take care of it for you and we'll send the town a copy so that you can see actually what went out.
Yeah. And we have that, don't we, Tim?
We, we do. We, we have that electronically. And if it's a standard business envelope, we could use the town's own envelopes. People are used to getting those envelopes with the green lettering from us. They'd know it was coming from the town if, if we could use those envelopes.
Yeah.
I believe we could. We'll probably just want to reimburse you for it. So we're not using your stock. But other than that, we'll probably just physically need to stop over to, we're not far away. I'll just have to, you know, maybe you leave it outside or whatever it might be. And I'll, I'll pick them up and leave you the check and I'll bring them to the vendor. We'll get them printed that way. If, if that's what the town wants to do, I don't think, geez, I don't think Gary would have a problem with that. Do you?
No, I don't think so. I think we just need to, it should be fine. We just need to get that do not discard message on there, you know, but we should be able to print right on what they have.
Just so you know, going back, the Department of Public Utilities has requested, no, I used the wrong term, required us to, it was, I just want to make sure that I don't.
That's even the nice.
Do not discard important notice regarding electricity rates on the bottom of your letter. We can certainly ask them to match font and color to the best of their ability, but they, one second, Denise, is that required in black or it, it wouldn't make a difference?
I don't think it makes a difference as long as we get the text on there.
Okay, great. So it, we would take your direction on that. And it is on, I don't know if Bob has that, so you could see down the bottom, the, the kind of the markup of the letter?
Yes.
I just don't know if, if everyone is seeing that or not.
Oh, the, what was sent out in the packet?
Yeah. I didn't know.
No, I, I. There's two letters. It's confusing. Why, what, what's the difference between the? The, the, the one in the packet was a few revisions ago. There was, there was some back and forth between Bob, the Energy Task Force and Colonial. So today I sent to you the, the most recent draft version of, of bulk notices. Yeah.
And is that one, the one that's dated December 1st, Tim?
I don't have it in front of me, but.
Oh, okay.
The one I have is dated November 30th.
I, I've got it in front of me with what he sent today. So hang on. Uh, the letter, Town of Carlisle Community Choice Power Supply, November 30th.
Oh, okay.
And the other documents, the press release.
And the other documents, the press release. And, and then there's the envelope, the customer notification letter envelope is on there.
Right. Yeah. There were three documents. Yeah. It's pretty separate.
That dot customer notification envelope, that's the one on the outside that, you know, all of these other pieces of information we put in. Well, the press release goes out on its own. The letter goes inside this envelope.
Actually, this does have the town of Carlisle, the envelopes. If there were a matter of being the wrong address, it says Town of Carlisle, care of the competitive supplier, One Supplier Street, Supplier, Massachusetts. So that, that would solve that problem of it not, you know, any letters that are misaddressed would not necessarily bounce back to the town hall. They'd go back to the supplier.
Yeah. And we could come to, Katie, it would come back to Colonial. Matter of fact, doing this, we, we prefer this so that we know who we didn't get in touch with and who we did, so forth and so on.
Right. So that's if we use the letter that I sent over as the markup. If we use the town envelope, right, it's going to go back to the town because that's going to be the return, the return address on there.
If, if we use your envelopes, it would end up back at town hall because that's going to be the return address on your pre-printed envelopes. If we did something like this, we could, we do, and I don't know if everyone's looking at it. We could have it come back to us like we normally would do. But, you know, maybe we could up, up once a week or whatever it was to pick up that if required.
Okay. So are we, are we interested in looking specifically at the content of the letter?
Well, I read it.
I, I was just going to pull it up because I was looking at the two that were in the packet and not, not the one that we just got. So.
You want me to pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great, Bob. Just because I had a couple of questions about the versions I saw, but they might've been addressed.
But we don't know, first of all, whether it's higher or lower. We still have a couple of things.
Yeah.
All right. So this is the version. All right.
Large enough?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, that's good. So on the, the ever source price there per kilowatt hour, I thought I saw something further below that says you have to, is that, are we actually going to show the price or did I see something?
Yeah. So ever source, go to RFP on November 17th. We don't know what that rate is going to be January 1 yet. They go out on November 17th. And, and they should file that price with the DPU shortly thereafter. We probably won't know it until November 24th.
So your plan is to put the actual price in.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, great.
And we're presuming, by the way, it's going to be higher than what we're.
Right.
Except for the optional green 100.
What's the thing that?
We don't, we don't, the projection that I think we talked about this when the contract, I think Mark projections are coming in at, what, 11, 3? So it might be right there.
It might be right at 11, 3, 11, 4, just depends. A little bit of good. Boston didn't sign a contract. It might create a little bit of migration risk for all the basic service. So maybe it comes in 11, 5, 11, 6.
Okay. But we chose the 11, 4 because that's what we thought the ever source number was going to be.
That was, that was about the average over the last 30 months.
I don't understand because Alan went to this meeting, right? And there was a bidding. It was a 20 minute window or something and.
Yeah, that's where we.
Locked in that price at that time.
Right.
Yes.
But this, this is not, these basic service prices are comparing to your alternative of getting your service through ever source.
Right. That's if you opt out.
Well, you're just saying, okay, so that the.
This is for information.
What's not in yellow is what we already, is what we locked in.
That's correct.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
And the, the default is the standard?
Their product.
Yes.
Yeah.
Your terminology, DPU, is it standard and optional?
Uh huh. It's just, I, I think for a, I don't know if there's a way to, I know you say it later on about the default, but I was just. I was just thinking if there was a way to identify it on that chart. I mean, when I looked at this letter, you know, the main thing that was very easy for me to understand was the per kilowatt hour differences. But understanding which one is the one I'm automatically signed up for unless I request it, something else, wasn't immediately clear, even though.
So we're mailing to folks that are already participating. So no one's going to get moved. I mean, anyone, everyone's just going to stay in the product they're in. So folks right now are either in the standard or the optional with the current contract. So folks will get moved over in line with the product they're in now. And then they could certainly choose to opt up to the green 100, which is the 100% mass class one option. They'd have to actively go online or make a phone call to opt into that, seeing it's a new option.
Right. And if somebody was in the optional basic but wanted to go to standard, they, they, I mean, anybody can, that's in it can request via the vehicle that's described to be moved to a different choice.
Right. The programs are already, are already, already in a product of their, you know, choosing. Otherwise they would have moved around. So it's not really a matter of.
Yeah, I just that I, yeah, I think, you know, as we talked about at the last board meeting, I think a lot of people in town probably have no idea, you know, what they've signed up for. And so understanding that, will it, will it designate when you get your letter? Is it, does it indicate which one you're in?
So the letter isn't addressed to a, everyone's going to get the same letter. So there's no match between the envelope and the letter, right? Going out to all participating.
Okay, it's a generic, to sort of, to, what do they call that? Resident letter?
Yeah.
Correct.
And Barney, it's a bad news.
It's not going to be. Yeah.
There's nothing on your current bill that will tell you what, what, so I'm just going to use, just say if someone was in the standard product, it's 10, 9, 8, 1 right now.
Yeah.
There's nothing there on your bill that would say to you, oh, I'm going to be switched to the 11, 4, 5, 0. You would just have to know what you are in now to where you are going to go. You, you don't have to do anything. It's going to happen automatically. But there's not something that states to you, unless you know that you're in the, the standard product now, that's RPS plus 100%, national wind, at 10, 9, 8, 1, there's no way of, there's no way of determining that.
Okay.
I just wanted you to be aware. It's not intuitive by, it's not you. It's not intuitive the way the department has this set up.
Yeah, right.
There's again, a couple of blanks to fill on once we know Eversource rates and whether they're higher or lower than ours. May change the wording. Yeah, and again, the Energy Task Force has been back and forth. We, a little bit on the wording here. And I think within the guidelines, we've got it as good as we can get it, I think, from the perspective of the Energy Task Force. And we've also added, by the way, that people can contact the Energy Task Force if they prefer for any reason.
Yeah.
Talk to us. We added that in.
Yeah.
Yeah, the select board should, should understand that the, the DPU very heavily regulates this particular communication. So there's not a lot of flexibility in what you, what you can say.
Yeah.
We already tried. We.
It's super unfortunate and we.
Feel sorry.
Agree. It's a little overstepping, you know, it's a town program and, and the town should, you know, really be able to speak to residents as it, you know, wants. But, you know, with all the third-party suppliers out there, the DPU is very sensitive about, if you say this, then that triggers you need to say this. And you always need to provide the comparative rates. And you always need to say savings cannot be received. And you can't use subjective terminology when describing products. So it's, it's really prescriptive. It's unfortunate. I completely understand, but it's just.
Denise.
You know, they want to make sure accurate black and white information gets out there, so.
Denise, do, do we as a town have the same restrictions? In other words, could we put a cover letter from the select board that says, you know, kind of more in plain English, we, you know, we looked at this thing. We think it's a good thing. You may not know what service you have, but it's likely you have this 100% wind, blah, blah, blah. By aggregating, we, you know, get some purchasing power. I mean, can we make those statements as a town and not be under the same restriction that you are as an aggregator?
So, and Mark, jump in if, if you disagree with what I'm saying. My recommendation would be to do that separate from the, the letter when it goes out in a, in a separate communication, whether it be a newsletter or a website posting or something that gets pushed out via another mechanism. I don't know, Mark, do you agree with that?
The, the only thing, so when we sent this in, and David, I, I actually like the way you're thinking here. The, the problem is, is they're so prescriptive, you know, now if we're a third-party supplier, we can basically lie, cheat and steal. But because we're immunization, we, you know, we're not allowed to.
We don't want you to lie, cheat and steal. We just want to make it in English.
Right, exactly. You know, I, I get it. The, the only reason I'm saying is, is when it was signed off on, I guess we could ask, we have some time. We could ask the department if a, so it's going to cascade. We could ask if they would mind if this letter was, could accompany the, the notification. What I'm wondering is, is what you, what you were going to say in that letter. So we don't have a, they go, okay, let us see the letter. And then we got that.
Well, we have, you know, we have time to draft, as you say, but let me give you what I'm hearing. One is, there's no way, I mean, I agree with Barney. The average resident opens up, me too. I have no idea what I signed for. I get this letter, which does explain my options, but it, it kind of says, you know, you don't have to do anything if you're happy with what you have, right? So we don't have, you know, the people are going to say, well, gee, it's coming from the town, but it doesn't really tell me what I have or what I'm going to be paying because I don't know which option I signed for. So it would be, you know, it would be better than, that's point one. Point two is, it's not super clear that it has the stamp of legitimacy of the select board or the town, even though it has an emblem, which is buttressed by the sample envelope you sent, you know, competitive supplier, One Supplier Street. I mean, I guess my, you know, my knee-jerk reaction is, let us mail the letters and let us put the Town of Carlisle Town Hall. Because the amount of people who won't actually be living at where their utility says they are is like 0.01%. There'll be like 10 letters that maybe we have to research. So I think, you know, the town can ably handle sending out 1,300 letters or whatever. And it would come back to the town and we could put a insert in that we want if we're allowed to. And we could think about how we want to say that in a way that people will understand what they read and as opposed to either A, to Alan's point, throwing it away, or B, saying, I don't know what this is. And, you know, asking like, where do I call and all this kind of stuff. So. And I think a better, I agree, you know, we don't want to lie, cheat and steal. And I take your point that some other, you know, companies are doing it in a more kind of snazzy marketing way. We don't need to do that. We just have to explain it. So I'd like to see a better outcome.
David, I think we'd be better off doing all that explaining before this letter goes out. This letter has got a lot of pages and a lot of words. If you just add another page and a lot more words, I don't know which one they're going to read. Well, I, I think we're much better off educating the, the public through the mosquito, through website, through whatever, you know, city in the woods, however you think.
You know, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure I agree, but I'll, I'll say, okay. So now let's, you know, go to that level. What, how do we address Barney's point? So I see the mosquito. It says, this is great. The select board did all these great things. We're going to save money, blah, blah, blah. We're going to be green. So I'm happy. Now I get the letter and I'm like, you know, I don't know what I have. How do you address the point that they don't know what they have?
Well, in part, most of them have the standard because there were only two choices before. You could have the standard or you could opt into the lower cost one. So you tell them, you know, you probably, unless you had already contracted with some other green third-party thing and it was, and you were still on Eversource, you, you were put in the standard column.
All right, fair enough.
Into the cheaper one. So that's where everybody is and they know, you know.
Okay, no, okay. And if I did sign with some third-party, do I stay with that third-party or is this moving me over?
Well, before, they had to because they probably had a, you know, let's say a one or two-year contract and then this came in and they couldn't get out of their other contract. Now they can, now if they're just back on Eversource, they're going to go into our standard.
But they have to do something to do that.
No, they don't.
So this is Denise. I just want to be clear. The only folks that are going to get this are folks that are currently participating in the program. So we're not allowed to mail to anyone who's on third-party supply. We don't have that information. That's a, we can't get that from the utility.
That brings up another set of issues. How do we induce those people to switch over?
Yeah.
Well, they did it for whatever reasons, you know, they, they, they went over to those other third-party things because either those third-party suppliers were offering greener energy than we were offering, or they were offering way less expensive energy.
Yeah.
And so.
Okay, let's.
And we can do it in a mosquito article. And I agree, I think we should do that probably before this, before this hits people's mailboxes. Saying that you're going to be getting this. Here's what it means. Here's what standard is. Here's what, I mean, before, actually, you had three options before. You had the standard option, which was the national wind. You had, you could stay with Eversource.
Yeah.
Or you could go to the low cost.
Okay. No, I agree. So what's our timetable? When do we have to get that out to the mosquito? Is this going out at the end of November?
Well, this all takes place the first of the year.
Okay, so.
So.
Letter, even though.
Got to be done prior to that.
Letter was planning to go out November 30th. Usually you send it out a month before a rate change, just so folks have the ability to switch, you know, on their meter read if they so choose.
So we need, I think, Alan, we need to, you know, offline, we need to draft a.
Yes.
A piece here. So let's.
The Energy Task Force would be happy to help with that. So if you want to appoint, appoint person to work with me, be happy to coordinate with the select board and help, help with that.
I'd be happy to be the select board coordinator since I was in, well, I was involved with the first time around. I know a little more about the history of it.
So my, my last, my last comment, then I'll shut up, is the, back to the envelope. I still think like, if there are the rare return addressy unknown or whatever, that the Town Hall is better equipped to reroute that than somebody else.
And I also think having our return address is just going to make people more likely to open it.
So that would be, that's my.
You may see the town, you may see the town seal on the corner, but if then you look at the return addresses, some, you know, this other company name, you don't recognize it.
I agree. So that's, I, I agree with Barney. That's my.
And so I'd just like to add, Mark Capitano, just, just asking, normally this is something that we would pay for. Does, does a company do this or is it employees at Town Hall that would be sending out the 1,600 pieces of mail? Or who actually handles this so that, I, I don't, I don't know how you guys do your mailings. I don't.
That would be Tim's.
There's a mailing service.
Yeah, I think, I think what Tim's idea was, was he was going to give you envelopes that already have the seal and the return address printed on it. And then whatever, however they normally did it, you, you normally do it. You would just use those envelopes. When I had understood with your previous conversation that that was doable.
That is very simple for us. That's easy. I, I thought you wanted to handle it, handle it, just, just the envelopes and it goes back to you.
No, if, if it's missed, Mark, if it's misaddressed, if they.
Yes.
If you send them out and the, I'm telling you, it'll be fewer than 10, 10 returns.
Yeah, but the problem is, David, that we don't have the list of the people because
Right.
not everybody in town gets this energy. And we cannot send this to everybody in town.
No, but you're, you're, Kate, you're overcomplicating it. Let, let Mark and his guys send it. I'm just saying, the return address is, is, is Westford Street.
Fine, that's fine.
And the handful that come back, we'll deal with. We'll deal with the handful.
Yes.
Right.
I thought you were saying that you thought the town.
Just, just the backend.
Okay, that's fine. I agree with you.
Um, let's try to zero in on the timing on this then, because what I'm hearing is that we, we should draft something to go in the mosquito that we would like to have there. I mean, I would recommend it's maybe a week before people might get the, this, this letter in the mail, right? So if you're planning to try to have the letter mailed, actually, you know, get done by your company and people receive it early December, then that means we're looking at the end of November mosquito issue. And hopefully it's maybe not right before Thanksgiving, right? Maybe it can be the one of the following, following Thanksgiving? Because I just, I wonder if.
Prior, I think prior to Barney.
You think prior to Thanksgiving?
I think so.
Thanksgiving is 26, 20, the 19th would be prior.
Yeah.
Is one, two, three weeks from now.
Yeah.
I think that's doable.
Is that doable?
Sure.
Yeah. And I know Betsy, Betsy Fellrally is interested in getting communications out on this, so I think.
Great. And then Denise and Mark, you would, ideally, when do you think you would want this to go out and when would people in Carlisle be receiving the formal announcement?
So we're, we're looking to mail on November 30th, right? We need the Eversource rates before we can mail. So it's going to be dependent on when we get those rates. So if we get those, I'm assuming around the 24th, once we populate them, we can send them over to our print vendor and he can start working on. So I'm hoping by the 30th, we can get it out.
Okay. So what we might want to do if it's at all delayed or, or even if it isn't, but have the mosquito run a small little, you know, in the issue that will come out right after the people get the letter, say, hey, reminder, you know, this, you're getting this letter about XYZ, right? And then, and then it sounds like we also need an additional method for inviting people that were not participating last time to participate this time.
So this is Denise. I don't want to complicate matters. I'm sorry to throw this at you. I just want to make sure we're, we're comprehensive here. So I don't leave anything out. And Bob and I had kind of talked about this. There, you know, so there are kind of three categories of people. People are participating in the program. Folks who are on third-party supply contracts who we can't mail to. And then there's folks that are on basic service, right? New in town or they rolled off third-party contracts since the last mailing that was done. We had planned, and you, and you can direct us if, if you still want us to do this or not, we were going to send a a basic service mailing to folks on basic service who had previously not opted out. And that involves kind of the initial launch information. It's a similar letter to this, but it has an opt-out card, right? Because those folks have to have 30 days to be able to opt out if they so choose. They're not already participating. We were going to kind of send that shortly just to the basic service folks after this mailing went out. Is that too confusing with two mailings floating around at the same time? Do you want us to hold off on doing this basic service mailing for a month after this letter goes out? At least it'll target those. Go ahead.
Is it, is it go, but it sounds like it's going to a different list.
Correct. So there are a bunch of folks who are on basic service right now. Those are folks that either opted out of the program in the past 30 months and wanted to just be on Eversource, or are folks that have rolled off third-party contracts. Uh, right. So that, that's a different list. It's a sim, eerily similar letter. Obviously, by the DPU, comes with an opt-out card that folks would have to return if they don't want to be enrolled. I know, super confusing, unfortunately.
Uh, so the second mailing you're talking about is, okay, they're automatically enrolled in it if they don't send back the opt-out card.
Right. That's similar to the initial mailing that went out. And we've been doing those periodically, quarterly or whatever since program launched. It's how you sweep in folks from basic service to keep enrollment numbers up.
Yeah.
So they don't have to actively, you know.
So they actually have to opt out again.
Well, you, if you've already opted out once, you won't be remailed to. You've already made a choice. We wouldn't remail to those folks. But it would be anyone new that never received the mailing in the past.
Okay.
Got it. And so the people that are currently enrolled, that are getting the first letter with these now four choices that we're offering, they will not get an opt-out card. They'll just have to read that if they don't want to participate again, they have to read the information and contact the appropriate person.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Or if they want to change from their current service, I mean, their current.
From the standard.
Type of program from the standard, yeah. Then they contact somebody and make the change. All right, I got it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Want a job?
And then, and then people have a, a certain amount of time, the, they have a certain amount of time to respond. And what's that deadline?
Are you talking about the basic service mailing, the second mailing? Is that what you're? Is that what you're, or the, are we still on the?
I was, well, let's, if there's a different timing for both of them, yeah, what is it for each one?
So for the participating consumers, they can, whatever it's convenient for them. They, they'll, they're just going to be moved over to what they're in now. If they want to switch, they can do that whenever they want. Immediately after December 7th, or two months down the road, um, whenever, no timing really there.
Okay.
The service mailing, we mail, you mail, say you mail in, in, um, December. They have 30 days to opt out. If they don't opt out in those 30 days, and there's a date on the letter, respond by, then they would get automatically rolled. Um, anytime after that, though, they may opt out at no fear penalty. But initially, they would be enrolled with that little batch for, you know, the list.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
And, and I did want to mention, uh, Dr., I just, uh, to your question, you could mail. We have the list of opt-outs. We have seen it be a, a bad practice, so we're very cognizant of that. People get upset, we already opted out of this. It's a town program. We, we just want you to understand, we have the list of people that have opted out in the past. We could show that to you and you could mail to them. Um, the problem is if they didn't catch it and they, it, they would be enrolled and that we have found it's been more of a hot button item than something that's, uh, advantageous. But I'm just telling you, you have access to the opt-outs if you wanted to, to do that.
That could be handled differently then. That could be handled by a.
Yeah.
A phone call or a postcard or whatever.
Any other questions?
Well, Alan, do you want to take time to look at the press release quickly? Or, uh, again, the Energy Task Force is working, uh.
Yep.
With, uh, with Colonial Power on that. It's, it's your call if you want to look at it quickly.
I've, I've seen it, so I was just, last, any of the other board members, if you're, if you've gone over, look at that. That was, that was one of the three pieces that was sent.
Right.
Energy Task Force might have a couple minor edits here, just moving things around a little bit, but nothing. I think the main thing is we need to get, um, a blurb about Carlisle and, and some sort of a logo to put at the, put at the end. And I don't know if we have something standard we can use there for press releases.
And another, just a minor, well, it's not that minor, because it's in the heading, but electricity is misspelled.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, geez.
Wow.
I looked at this five times and didn't see that.
That's what you get when you get a teacher on the school board, on the, uh, select board.
Very much. Wow.
Well, that would have been embarrassing. Thank you so much.
I gather from the silence, we're going to leave that up to the Energy Task Force to, uh.
Yeah, well, I mean, isn't that somewhat, what we were talking about is the letter that was going to go to the, you know.
Yes. Well, there'll be that, there'll be that letter, plus there'll be a mosquito article.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so that letter could maybe be a real pared-down version of this even.
Right.
Yeah, and the mosquito article the last time, so the, the nice thing about being remote, um, is you can actually look this stuff up. Um, so, so, yeah, I just, I just went on and it was actually, it's, you know, it's from June 6th of 2018. Um, and it's, it's actually really well done. And Scott, what is aggregation? Boom, 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 opt-out anytime without penalty, boom, boom. You know, so it's very, um, you know, just question, answer, question, answer, question, answer. And I don't remember, when did we sign the last one? So I.
Well.
30 months ago.
Yeah. Yeah, so what would that have put us in, June, July? So it's just last week, we opened the homeowner, received instructions, right? So this came after people had gotten the mailing, but it looks like there were a couple before. So, you know, we should actually almost think about that, right? Try and get one in before and then one after, right? So then.
Yeah.
You give them a heads up, this is coming, and then they get it and, you know, they can say, oh, you know, this is, okay. This is, this is exactly what I'm looking at. Cause I, you know, I, I mean, come to them, I, we, we had these same discussions.
We did, exactly. The same discussions, you know?
Right, just with three different people, yeah. Um, yeah. So.
So.
What's up?
Well, David was trying to butt in and, uh, he was muted. I can, other than, or he was talking to his son, I don't know. No, he's still muted.
Yeah, then.
Uh, maybe Tim could unmute him?
Yeah, I'm trying, trying to. There we go. No, there he is.
Oh, he's still muted.
There we go. Okay. Too anxious on that button.
The question is, um, does this PR piece come as a separate mail? How is this sent around and when? Not what we would do, but what this PR from Colonial.
So we would release it to local papers, David.
Okay, so it wouldn't be mailed directly to individuals? It would just be?
It wouldn't, it would not. It's a press release.
Okay, fair enough. So I think it's not really going to get much play, right? So I think it's, it, it sounds to me, Luke, like the FAQs would be more useful in our, you know, whatever we put out, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Uh. I just wanted to ask, Luke, what, what was the date of the mosquito article that you had up?
It was the 6th of June, 2018. It's called, yeah, it, uh, the title is, what's the buzz?
Okay.
About Carlisle's new electricity program.
Okay, so we, we all could look that up in their archives and, and read that and see what we would be aiming for. Thank you very much.
And I just want to thank Bob and the Energy Task Force and whoever else has been involved in this and Denise and Mark. But, cause I know this is a, there's a lot of information here and a lot to sort through, and I really appreciate the Energy Task Force's work on this.
Yeah. And I also, I'm, most don't know this, but, uh, Denise and Mark were working, I mean, they worked over the weekend on this stuff. They were putting in their time and a half, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Let us move on. Cable license renewal process. Uh, Jenny, you're, Jenny's on. Good evening.
I'm here.
Do you want to walk us through this?
Sure, so you, you guys are in the process of renewing your cable licensing. And we received a letter from the state reminding us that we need to continue with this process. Um, and really, the next step you guys need to do is undertake, uh, it's known as an ascertainment process, where you try to figure out how, um, the cable provider has been doing. So, uh, now, I guess really what's up for you to do today is decide how you would like to do that. Towns, either appoint a committee to try and figure this out, or do this with staff, or often hire a consultant to basically go out and survey people, um, in town to find out what their cable needs are. And if they've been met, survey the town, find out if there's anything that they want, um, the cable provider to do, uh, like provide, um, particular peg channels or, you know, other types of community, um, services. And then give you a report, and we need this report by April, which sounds like it's a long ways away, but it's really not.
Really not, no. Well, I think, I mean, I get, I'd see under your immediate next steps, uh, you, uh, the board of selectmen should immediately determine whether the board should establish a cable advisory committee. And I suspect that's probably what we ought to do. And, uh, that they can then go through that process of trying to find out what the town feels they might like, or complaints they have about the current cable system. Uh, so, uh, if the board, uh, would agree to that, uh, we can, we can appoint a committee and, uh, and get started in that process.
Are we sure we want to do a committee and not just get a consultant?
Yeah, who is around for the last time? It sounds like we had difficulty getting anybody to want to volunteer for this.
Tim, do you know what happened last time?
The, the cable advisory committee was active then, 10 years ago, when the license was last renewed. But, uh, following that, they, they were kind of, uh, you know, less and less active. And we have, they haven't been a committee, you know, for a number of years. When we put this out a year or so ago, we didn't get any takers on the, uh, committee. So, um, maybe to Kate's point, I'm wondering if, uh, retaining a consultant and having, you know, the board act as the, uh, the committee might be the, uh, the quicker way to do this. I mean, if we can't get a committee together for a month or two, where we've kind of, we've wasted a couple, couple of months, you know.
And what, I, I guess, what, I always ask the same question, what problem are we trying to solve?
Well. It's not a problem, it's a requirement that we're trying.
So what is it?
Yeah.
If we, but, but let's go for it. If we determine whether it's task force consultant, Ouija board, whatever it is, if we conclude that people don't like their cable provider, which basically nobody likes their cable provider, what do we do next?
So usually, I mean, you're, you end up with this report that basically, you know, it's like a report card for them. Um, and you use it in your negotiations with them, um, if you decide to, you want to negotiate. Which, you know, towns usually do.
Well, let's, let me ask a broader question then, Jenny. Um, if, if, forget whatever exists, are we, can we have an open bid? I mean, how many actual providers, if, forget the revaluation? If we just said, we're opening it up, we don't, you know, anybody can bid, how many companies would bid? Is it usually just?
We don't, we don't have anybody else to bid.
One.
Yeah. That's our big problem. And I, because I, I think the last time, when, when they set the rates, it's like, this is what Concord's rate is. This is what you're getting, you know?
So why are we wasting our time? If that's the case, then why waste our time?
Yeah, why, why, why waste our money on a consultant?
You know, that's why I asked the question, like, we shouldn't do it just to do it. Like, is there a there there? Or is, if they're the only game in town, then okay, they're the only game in town.
Right, yeah, because we can't, we, we can't use this to leverage them to do things, right? I mean, you know, because, like, there are certain pockets in town where they don't have cable, right? So, um.
That's the chief complaint to those areas that are hard to serve.
Right, yeah, and, you know, I mean, especially, it must have been a nightmare for, um, for people that had kids that were remote. But, um, you know, I, there's no way to leverage this, is there? And get them to extend cable to these areas, or is, you know, is there any benefit to pushing back on them, Jenny, or?
I mean, I think that's what you would use it for, is to leverage it to try and get more, you know, more services that you want out of them. You tell them, you know, they're falling down here and there, and if we're not, you know, we won't renew.
Won't we?
We won't wait to renew, but we have to.
That's right.
Yeah, the difference between a threat and a, a promise, right?
Yeah. And if, you know, you can also.
Desperate appeal.
One benefit of having a consultant is, is they, a lot of these consultants, I think, work in other towns and they can tell you what other towns have received. So, you know, you can say, well, you did this for this town, do it for us. And they're more likely to give on those.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and frankly, even if we had a cable committee, you know, you have to have a lot of knowledge. And I don't think, um, we have that kind of resource in this town necessarily. Though, I mean, the big guy that we had, you know, Claude is, is in Maine or Vermont somewhere. Um, I think, um, Carrie was interested at one point, but, you know, he didn't, doesn't know anything about it, really. Um, anyway.
Yeah, well, maybe we see how much a consultant costs.
Yeah.
I think it would be certainly who wants to find out how much a consultant. And I think it would be a very limited ask that, to this consultant.
Yeah.
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 Because really, we don't expect.
Oh, Jenny, do you know of consultants that we can go find?
We've found a couple, there's a couple. I, I know, um, one that another one of our towns used, Tim found one in, what was, where were they out of, Tim?
I think, uh, Boston, FC in August, I think, uh.
There was someone else we found too.
Oh, there was one in Amherst's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. A question for Jenny, though, I mean, is the, the ascertainment process, is that a statutory part of the licensing? Or, or, okay.
So the, the town can't say, we're, we're just not doing that piece of it.
We're gonna, we're gonna go straight to the negotiations. We have to do that first.
We have to do that first. Um, yeah.
Yeah, all right, well, you know, if we, if we can get a consultant at a reasonable price, that seems to be the way to go. Because clearly we're, you know, we've got an awful lot of stuff on the table for the volunteers to do. And, uh, that seems to be, uh, one more job that, for which nobody is qualified and.
Plus, it's, it's pretty thankless, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they, they probably want a consultant to help them.
You always want a consultant.
All right, well, let's, let's, okay, we'll ask, uh, we'll see what we can do about finding a consultant and see what the price would be and go from there. Good. Everybody agree?
Yep.
Good.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thanks Jenny.
You're welcome.
Thanks Jenny. For giving us the nudge. So Tim, you gotta, you gotta be the one that follows up here to make sure we don't end up twiddling our thumbs until suddenly we're a month away from the deadline.
I still have my two satellite dishes on the roof.
Here we go, one year, one year to go.
Yeah.
We've been full warned, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jenny.
Bye.
Thanks Jenny.
When I moved here, we didn't have any cable.
I, no. When, when I moved and did some, you know, hardscape, I laid conduits so that when fiber optic would come to town, I would have a, a way to get it to my house. Waiting for the fiber optic.
Yep.
You dreamer. Dream on.
For the next homeowner.
Yeah.
Dream on.
And, and when this 10-year agreement expires, then you can just do that one.
Yeah. Jeez.
All right.
He's being so smart. Okay.
Let's go to the town administrator's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I saw a couple of items, I think that, uh, Chief Fisher handled quite nicely in his earlier report. But, uh, I guess the, the main thing I wanted to let the board know is that I've, I've been, uh, working with Mark Way and we've, uh, scheduled, uh, a series of, uh, training sessions for department heads during the month of November, uh, specific to the goal-setting process. As we know, the, uh, the practice of performance evaluations has fallen off significantly and, and part and parcel of that is, is really having, uh, achievable, measurable goals, uh, established by, uh, the department heads for their employees and, and actually for board chairs, establishing goals for department heads. So the training will be open to board chairs, uh, as well. And, uh, we've, uh, planned for three small, smaller groups so that we can do the training in a socially-distanced way in the Clark Room. The land use, uh, boards, the public safety boards, and the town hall group, for lack of a better, uh, name. This is something that, uh, we had discussed at a small group meeting a few weeks ago and, uh, I've been working with Mark on, uh, developing the program since then. But, uh, I had a chance to preview this with the department heads and, uh, there, my, I, I wouldn't say there was enthusiasm, there wasn't much pushback either, so. Uh, uh, you know, I told them that, uh, it, it was, it wasn't mandatory that they, they take the training, but the mandatory piece is that they're going to have to develop goals for, uh, their employees and do performance evaluations this year. So you might as well take advantage of the training that's being offered in that regard. So I think I might have attached, uh, to my report, a list of the three groups that we've.
You did.
Come up with and, uh, you know, there might be some.
You included us, uh, let me see.
On public safety.
Under public safety, okay. And that would have, that would be Monday, November 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00.
Yeah, we can talk about that, I guess, on Friday, as to who, you know, uh, from the board might want to be part of that, or. Certainly, uh, going forward. But, you know, I think, I think when Mark did training, you know, with this board, I think it was pretty well received and, uh, you know, we're fortunate to have him, uh, in the community. So, and in the Clark Room, I think will be a good setting. you know, we're fortunate to have him in the community. So in the Clark Room, I think will be a good setting and I think the groups are small enough where there's not a, you know, huge concern about overcrowding or, you know, not being prudent in how we do it. So that'll be coming up after the election. I promised the town clerk, we wouldn't do anything until after the, the election ends next week and early voting continues and for election day, we're encouraging as many employees as possible to work remotely. To free up parking, as you know, it's always, always a nightmare parking on election day. Although the town clerk, interestingly, the early voting mail-in voting, drop-off voting has been so heavy that she's actually not anticipating the usual rush on election day itself. So it'll be interesting to see how, how it does turn out that way. It's been such, you know, huge turnout really nationwide with the early voting. It's a different kind of election year. And then just the chief alluded to Halloween event and we've got the website there for the Halloween event. I got a list of the, the board's upcoming meetings. November 10th, well, we're scheduling the tax classification hearing. We may have to postpone that, but we're advertising the hearing for the 10th in case we're ready to go at the setting of the tax rate. Also, on the 10th, COA Director Joe Ingersoll will be coming in to discuss a reorganization plan with the board in the wake of Angela Smith retiring. She's been doing some planning with her board and they've got some pretty interesting ideas on what things may look like going forward. So that'll be, that'll be an interesting meeting and then meetings through the rest of the year. Not a lot this week in my report, I guess I, I, but I did want to let you know about that training going forward and I didn't know who might want to be part of that. I know Kate and David are part of the small group that's been meeting on this, but you know, if you have an interest, you can just shoot me an email and we'll see what we can do as far as that goes.
Jim, I, I had some, just had some interest in sort of hearing a little bit more about how you're setting up the, these sessions. I think it's a great idea. I applaud you for moving ahead with this. Have you and Mark sort of thought about how you're gonna structure this? Like what I'm thinking about is are you expecting each department to develop, th- this is sort of a generic goal setting session and then they go off and, and work as a department to set goals? Or is there going to be some, like, are you going to use the select board goals as any kind of a framework or, you know, how are you thinking about these sessions and the outcomes that you're looking for?
Well, I guess I'm going to leave it to Mark to conduct the training, but he's actually, he's got a document that we're going to send out to participants this week that, that explains a little bit about how he envisions the training rolling out. My guess it would, you know, go from the general to more general to more specific training and, you know, he intently wanted the groups to be, you know, by subject matter areas, you know, the land use and versus public safety and so forth.
Yeah. So I mean, it's a very good question that Barney asks because the small meetings we've been having are focused around a commonality of purpose, right? So I think there's multiple, there's two different objectives and they are complementary, in my opinion. I think as a best practice, training, helping the professionals in town government think about their goals and their performance and then to the degree they report to boards, having them report back and be evaluated. I mean, that whole thing is good and, and, you know, in, in, in that small group meeting, I've referred to the school committee and the DESI system, which is codified through the Department of Education as being a good practice in that. So that's good. And I think Mark understands that process fine, because he did it with us very well. The, the other agenda that I think maybe Barney's alluding to is in that process, what the GE folks used to call guided discovery, right? So you get them to kind of explore a, an objective that we want, which is to get the land use boards to coalesce around common things that they can do together. And I presume public safety would be the same. Maybe town halls the same. So that ultimately we can also use those, that, that kind of process and goal setting to streamline the whole process, make it more efficient and allow sharing of resources so that, you know, we can just be more efficient, we can just do it better, right? And I'm not sure Mark is, has Mark been sort of coached on that?
No, not, not, not to this point. I mean, I think he, I think he could ensure that there's some intersection with the goals he developed for the board with the goal setting that he's.
But I mean, right, he has that background. I guess
Yeah.
we're meeting Tim on Friday, right?
That's right.
So maybe, you know, maybe that's something we could discuss in Friday's meeting about, at least from our view, what that, you know, where that goes and perhaps have a prep session with Mark, just to kind of give him that extra. He well knows, we don't need to, you know, he knows better than we do how to facilitate meetings and get agreement from different parties and all that. He's, that's his job. So I don't in any way want to, you know, make it sound like we're trying to shortcut that, but giving him that overlay, in my opinion, would be useful.
Okay, I'll see.
Kate, do you have a comment on that? Because you're part of this.
I, I'm, I'm in total agreement with you though, because what we were finding in the, in the land use pocket in the small group is that it overlaps with the personnel and the goal setting and all this.
Right.
In, in, you know, inextricably bound. And so this, I agree that this should be not done in
Yeah.
absent that context.
Right. So, so let's use Friday. That's a good thing. I mean, Friday, I already sent you a note, Tim, earlier today about the agenda for Friday. So this is a good item, I think, to chat about. And then I, I know very little about the public safety piece, but I'm guessing that's a rich territory for the similar kind of a process.
Okay. Do you want to see if Mark can make Friday, make that session for a little while or want to set something up outside of that?
Yeah, I think outside of that. I think we need, we need to prep and we haven't met in three weeks and
Okay.
There's a lot of housekeeping. I don't want to tie him up on that. But right after, you know, if we can agree, we, we're, you're just saying for me and Kate, but you know, there's six other people involved. I don't want to speak for them.
And then do you see this? Like, will you lay out some sort of timeframe for departments? Sort of working with their, those that have a staff or, or with their, you know, if they staff a committee, working with them to agree on a set of goals and, and bring those back to I don't know who, what, do they go back to Tim or they come to the select board or, you know, what, what happens after this, these training days?
Well, then, let me, let me jump in on Barney. So I think this came out of this group that we're looking at sort of the commonality of land use.
Yeah.
And the point, and I just made it again, you know, I mean, I come out of an environment, out of the school committee where there's a very structured system where the head, the top, well, that the board itself, as we did, as you recall in the summer, whenever we did it, engage in a goal setting process and that those goals flow to the top administrator, whether it's a George Mansfield, Linda, whatever. And then there, at least in the school world, there's a very structured goal setting, check-in and evaluation process that results in a evaluation of the superintendent annually, you know, those of you who
Right.
schools understand that. Now, we don't need to be nearly as structured as they go, but the basic process is not bad. It's like, okay, here are goals, let's translate those committee goals into your goals, top administrator and your staff, if there is staff. And let's, you know, reduce those to some action items. And let's have a check-in and let's see how you did. I mean, it's, you know, it's basic sort of good practice. Bringing that, bringing just that to other areas of town government is a good practice.
Yeah, absolutely.
The secondary piece, though, is in that process. If you bring, say, you know, in our case, in the case we're talking about the health, the board of health and the cons comm and the planning board together, and they find commonality in that process, it helps them understand that there are things that they could do together, or they could possibly share resources, or maybe they coalesce around, you know, a certain IT thing, like the online permitting or whatever, and I'm just taking an example, that they all agree is a good thing. And then that gives you more leverage to say that's something that should be a common goal and maybe even commonly achieved as a goal. So, so there's, there's, it's beginning that whole current of saying, let's take a reexamination of all the compartmentalized functions we have.
Right.
So it's a lot of stuff there. And, and I think, you know, Mark knows his piece, you've been through it. But what we're saying is, okay, let's, let's begin to introduce this other thing. It's not going to be all in the first year, but it's beginning the process that says, okay, let's all get together and let's see what, you know, areas of, of common achievement we can get.
So you, it sounds like you are anticipating that the, the training happens, then there is a process of working with the relevant individuals around that topic to set goals and then some way of bringing people back sort of to discuss across departments. You know, are there some shared goals? And then ending up with some kind of a written set of goals that those individuals, you know, those top staff people will be evaluated on. Is that right?
Well, again, I, I want to make it, from my view, I'm not driving the process, but from my view, if we just got to the point this year, you asked a question about schedule. So, you know, in the normal, say, school schedule, this whole process would have happened, you know, two months ago or a month ago. And then it would culminate in, of course, school goes in a very, you know, structured year that's from September to June. But that that would result in an evaluation at the end of that year. And, you know, so we're not, we're not, we're not there, but you got to start somewhere. So if, if we simply this year, if we simply got people to think about their goals here in, you know, October, November, and by, you know, June, right, when we're kind of changing over to the new fiscal year, if we evaluated those goals and started the process of setting new goals, that would be a win to me. I mean, that would just be at least getting people on a calendar of kind of looking at, looking at what you do in a one year and maybe a three year sort of plan. That's probably enough. I think the idea of facilitating this process like Mark is doing with common groups together is a little bit of an organic process that they just kind of have to hear from each other, like what's going on and get a little more visibility into the commonalities. I, I wouldn't personally force that. It's too much in the first year. It's just the beginning of understanding that, hey, everybody kind of shares the same goals and maybe there's some things we can do, you know, we talk about IT upgrade or whatever, maybe there's some things we can together agree. And then now that comes back to select board and says, hey, three, four boards, three, four committees, professionals agree, this is a top priority, gives us
Yep.
you know, some ammunition. The other thing I would say is there's an education of the boards, right? You know?
Yes.
The boards are made up of volunteers and sometimes they come from industry, like I do. Sometimes they come from, you know, school like you do sometime, you know, so they got a lot of knowledge, institutional knowledge from their own lives, but there's not, in my opinion, a very good board education that goes on here, you know, and, and we can make that better. You know, the boards should be saying, like, it, it's a very, I mean, I don't want to just drag this on too long. I'm, I'm blowing Alan's, you know, timetable here, but it's an important point that the, the administrators, the Georges and the Lindas are in kind of an uncomfortable position because they report to the board and they meet with the board, but they also have a town hall function that reports up through, you know?
Right.
So getting some clarity and getting the boards engaged and saying, okay, these are the goals of our board. And then they at least have something they can build on, you know? I just feel like, I think all of that is good and it just, you know, it's, it's a good place to start. I don't want to make too much of it the way you're going. I don't want to make it overly. And I see John woke up here, so maybe John, you could think about it. You know, in the place with your own goals.
This is also important for, it's, it's for our entire operation of our, the whole town. Because when we are meeting with FinCom, for instance, and we are trying to direct FinCom and give them some direction as to what our priorities are for the budget, we need to know, we, we, we've been going in blind. We don't know what the goals are of the various other, you know, departments are in advance. So how can we tell them, you know, that we think that, you know, we should put more, you know, emphasis on this rather than that or whatever, or even, so it, it, I think it's really going to be important all around because it's, it's going to open up communication, it's going to open up everything and make all of our decisions, I think, better decisions down the line.
Yeah. Well, I think this is a great effort. One, just quite specific thing here about your list of people. I noticed that under town hall, you have the RecCom Chair or Member. Did you mean to include the Director as well?
The, well, the Director is the only employee of the department, so she wouldn't, she doesn't have any employees to meet with to evaluate, that's what I'm trying to say.
But, but wouldn't she integrate to the goal setting for?
Yeah, she should go to the goal, she should go to the goal setting.
Yes, absolutely. Well, she has to set her own goals and then, Tim, you are going to be the one that has to be evaluating on it, her, on it. So, I mean,
So she should go.
I'll talk to Holly. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. And, and then the other thing I wondered is, so, I mean, I know the FinCom does not have any particular staff, but are they, how do you view the FinCom in terms of their goals or?
Well, they, they've got, they've got lots of staff. They've got Priscilla and Kimberly.
Well, that's true. So, so shouldn't there be a FinCom person?
Yeah, that would be a good idea, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Jim should go. Jim should go.
Well, but Kim, Kimberly, you know, doesn't work for the FinCom.
No, but she's actually on the FinCom, isn't she?
No.
She's a member of the FinCom.
No. I mean, in some sense, I believe we should include FinCom in our goal setting next year. FinCom works for us. There, that, that alliance between select board and FinCom is a pretty important linkage that I believe.
Absolutely.
Maybe next year we should take that up in the, you know, in the summertime.
Yeah, but that's true of all the boards. Yeah.
Well, they, yeah, all the boards, but you know, that's the board that we were closest with. And planning board and health board and school board don't report to us. So, I mean, I do agree, we should have common goal setting things, but anyway. But Chief Fisher's there and I just thought, John, do you have a process in your teams that you set your, you set your own goals and you set goals for your staff? And do you have anything like that?
I set goals for the supervisors and then it's, it's, I guess, a a piece of it, the, the goals and objectives at the police department tend to be, you know, things, projects, processes, you know, lines of leadership. You know, who's, who's doing what this year and how are you doing with it? And how'd that compare with the person that did it before you? And then it's, then with, when we do the supervisors' meetings, we talk about, all right, who's, who are we training? Who, who's going to be responsible for other things? And how's that communicated to the, the officers? So, so yes, you know, one of the things that is reflected in our evaluations is the i- is, is how they've done with those things. But one piece that's missing that is kind of the last piece of our evaluation is, is is putting down action plans right, right when we do the evaluation. So I've got it. We're, we're adding that right now. That's part of our next thing. And I can show you our evaluations and kind of our processes and And I can show you our evaluations and kind of our processes and. Show you a few years worth of people's evaluations if it would help. Excuse me while I reach for the plug. But, um, yeah, so, so in, in brief, I, yes, but I'm, I'm also anxious to hear what Mark Way has to say. And, um. If, if, if we need to take a, um. A sharper look at this and basically what I'm missing and how I can make it better.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's your, you know, sort of operational goals that you push down to your staff, but. There's kind of strategic goals. I mean, as the executive. I think you should have strategic goals that may flow from us, in fact, in terms of where do we want to take the town with the. Public safety outlook. And then there's. Coordination goals, you know, with Brian and I guess you guys share the communication function, right? But. So, you know, the, that would be to me kind of. The more interesting part to come out of your exercise with Mark about. What are the broader goals that we should be striving towards? We trust you to, you know, manage your staff. It's, it's the. What's the direction of? Public safety. What does public safety look like, you know, in 2030 or whatever?
Right, yeah, yeah. Right, yeah. And I have those too, but I normally. I normally share those with the law enforcement liaison or my liaisons with the board and frankly with Tim. Excuse me for a plug.
Thank you.
All right.
Did we conclude about the Select Board? Is, um. Do you want just one member of the Select Board to go to the public safety session?
Uh, well, no, no more than two, I'd say. It's probably. Who's the liaison? Is that you, Kate?
I'm the, 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 yes.
Well, Luke is fire and, and Kate, you're police and I'm DPW and I'm.
You're library, aren't you?
In the library, yeah.
So, um. I'd like to do the land use one.
Yeah, why don't, why don't Kate and I do land use and then Luke and Barney, you can do the other one.
Public saves, that's going to work for you, Lou?
Probably not.
I mean.
Luke and I will, I will, um, step in.
Okay, thank you.
You should be first, you know, choice.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, yeah.
What about Town Hall? I mean, maybe Alan, you should go to that one.
Oh, I can't. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm a lame duck, but I'll, I can, uh.
Yeah, but you should.
Yeah, I mean, I can at least represent the board there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if nobody else would, wants to be a second, I'd be happy to be a second there. As well. That's Friday from 10 to 12. Okay, I have to look at my calendar.
Alan, you have seven months to go. You're not really a lame duck.
Yeah, you can't call yourself a lame duck yet. We may, uh, you know, if COVID is still going on, we may, um, you know, have to extend your term for a while. So don't start backing out here.
And, and start by getting us back on schedule.
Yeah, well, I could do that if people would stop talking.
Conversations, though. This is what gets us really forward.
No, this is, this is a very important, I think, really strategic and glad to be here.
Okay, appointments, cultural council. We have a nominee. I have, I have a motion.
Let me get it up.
I move to appoint Kenneth Seltzer. Of 145 Church Street Appointment, I mean Apartment C15. To serve on the Carlisle Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2023.
Been moved, we have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
Lode, I.
Me, I.
It's unanimous. We will notify, uh, Mr. Seltzer that he is now on the cultural council. Thank you. Uh, right. Liaison reports, uh, I submitted mine in writing, so I don't need to present it. And the other liaison reports.
I actually had a question about it, but I can't get out of the screen. So do you know anything about, uh, the restructuring ideas?
No, not yet. Well, I mean, very briefly, she, she's talking about reassigning some people who are already in the office. To take on some of Angela's duties. And then obviously they'll hire somebody else, but the idea that, you know, you're not, you're not going to find anybody who'll put in the hours that Angela put in. Uh, so it's, it's going to have to be redistributed, but she's still talking about hiring a single person. Uh, and then redistributing other duties.
All right.
Some probably won't be done the same way either.
Yeah, all right. Um, actually, what I was wanting to respond to was number six, where there's a Zoom meeting on accessory apartments being planned. Um, and I wanted to say that while I was doing some. Investigations for the Housing Trust. Um, to find out if we had any money in our account, um, I. Discovered, in fact, I, I need to do some more research because that we have $90,000. Uh, from a warrant article from 2000 and I think it was six. Which is why I, uh, don't have any more information about it because I need to know how it's worded exactly, but from what I understand. It was meant to help, um, people who wanted to put an accessory apartment. Um, in their house, help to finance this. So I am. Tim, if you wouldn't mind, I, I did leave a message for Jen, but I don't. Know how her mother is and if, you know. She's okay, but I, I need to, I need to know the wording of this article. Um, and, and I think it would be germane to their Zoom conference and they should probably get in touch with me or somebody before they have their Zoom. Thing about accessory apartments, so, but, you know, we could add that information.
Okay, yeah, we'll track the vote down.
Would you please? And I remember whether it was 2000, I, I wrote, I have it in another notebook. Uh, on something else I was working, but, um. It's way back. I went online and our. Annual things online, annual, you know, reports online didn't go far that, go that far back.
Okay. Yeah, is that money still there?
Yes.
Are you sure?
I am sure.
And for some reason I thought, I, yeah.
Not only is the 90,000 there, but it's got $4,000 of interest.
Oh, okay. Oh, my, my catch is Canada. Yeah, because I thought there was something that, um. Then, because nobody used it, right? Is this the front, like, nobody, okay.
Nobody used it. So, but that's why I want to find out how was it written?
Yeah.
Maybe it needs to be re-advertised because people don't know that. I didn't know it was there. You know?
No, yeah, no, this, this is something that came up a while ago because there was that accessory apartment. Thing, a town meeting. Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm digging into it and I think they, you know, COA should know about this as well. So that's that.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, is it Ann James that's still working on the accessory apartment meeting with the COA?
I. I don't know.
Okay.
I'll check that.
You just been in touch, you know, last spring about. That. Representing the COA and that they wanted to hold an informational meeting. So, anyway.
Yeah, they're trying to find, they're just, still trying to find out even who, where they are and who has them, so.
Yeah.
Oh, that, they should, uh, be able to find that out from planning.
Well, they, they haven't been able to find out. They think there's some that the planning doesn't know about.
Oh. Interesting.
But I don't know. They, they, anyway, they were going to follow up on that.
All right, uh, but there's. Okay. Uh, then, so municipal facilities has continued to meet and, um. As you know, um. We, well, we are still struggling with the septic at the DPW. Um, because we, we missed the deadline. When we went out for rebid, um, so we'll have to probably wait till this. Spring for. And I think, uh, Steve Hinton is, we're meeting with the Board of Health now and seeing what we have to do about the septic system there. We talked about the priorities for the $300,000 and we thought the first, we think the first priority is for every. Uh, replacing the chiller unit at the library because we've been using, um. You know, chlorofluorocarbons, um. To recharge it every year and it leaks, it leaked. We had to put 30 pounds in it this year and we. Could possibly change it over to new. Product, but that would be an expense in itself, so we are. Uh, we prioritize that as number one. On our list for things to get done and that will. Moving ahead.
Will that leave money for a number two?
It, it leaves a little money for, yes, that'll be around, uh. Uh, well, we have to get the prices on it. We decided to do it that way, by the way. We're going to do a one-for-one exchange on that chiller. Because that's the least expensive, um. Way of taking care of the problem, um, but it will not give us any upgrades, uh, for. You know, all these technical terms, the VFCs and the this and the that's, um. But it would be exceeded, it would be a lot more money. If we wanted to be more energy efficient. We'd have to do a bunch of other things and there's not room in their current. Utility area to put that in. So then that would mean that we'd either have to put a, a doghouse outside and then we. You know, that would be more expensive. Plumbing and new thising and thatting. So what we decided to do was to talk to the trustees. And tell them what our decision with our $300,000. Was how to spend, you know. Fix their problem with that, our budget and to tell them there are other fixes that could be done, but if they want to look into more efficient. You know, system and something else, they would have to kick in the other funds, you know, do fundraising or. Participate in the, um, purchase of that.
Okay.
This fixes the problem, but it, you know, it doesn't upgrade anything.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Hearing none.
Oh, 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 now we got a good one. Uh, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. So, um. You guys only saw a couple of emails about crosswalks. I, I probably received about 12. Um, that's, it's, it's all of a sudden become a very popular thing. So, yeah, so the, we met, um, yesterday and, um. Yeah, we, long story short, you know, a lot of the crosswalks in town, not the ones in the center now, but. But, um, or directly in the center, but, you know, moving outward. Um, a lot of those crosswalks are not properly sighted, you know, they're. Um, you know, line of sight is, is horrible in certain areas, uh, Bingham one, uh, Bingham Road one. In particular, uh, numerous people have emailed me about. And, um. You know, there's really no easy fix. Or, or inexpensive fix. So, um, what we're going to look into is, is, uh. Possibility of doing a study to determine. Exactly, you know, one, where are they sighted and are they sighted properly? And then also two. Um, you know, the signage and whatnot, which that would be appropriate because one of the things that. Uh, we discussed at our meeting is that, you know, like the signs, the flasher signs that are out in front of 142 Bedford Row that are getting. Changed out. Um, those no longer meet and, and Chief, you can probably speak to this better than I can, but, but they no longer meet. Um, the standards for, is it federal standards or?
Yeah, federal, MUTCD.
Yeah, um, you know, so the thing is you move something that doesn't meet standards to a crosswalk, right? Somewhere else in town trying to save a buck and, uh, something happens, right? You know, um, you kind of willfully. You know, tried to go with the cheap fix. So, you know, I'm not saying that, that we're gonna, you know. Have to spend $100,000 upgrading all the crosswalks with flashers and whatnot, but, um. You know, but there are some that are more heavily used now with COVID. And kids are not taking the buses. Um, you know, we will have a bit of a reprieve, I think, in the winter, but, um. But at the end of the day, you know, we, um, we, we really need to kind of, uh, focus on improving some of them. Uh, you know, some of the easier ones, you know, like up by the school and the one that I think that's just repainting, you know, those are. You know, th- those are a little easier fixes. It's the ones that, you know, one of the one on East Street. Which, uh, people drive through at about 50 or 60 miles. No, probably 40 or 40 miles an hour, right?
It's more than 25, I can tell you that.
Oh, without a doubt, without a doubt, you know what I mean?
One with the flasher. I, I've, I've stood there with the dog a couple of times in the past couple of weeks and with, I pushed the button. I even checked just that the flasher is working and cars have blown right by me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's, I mean, it's just, it's kind of a common thing and, you know, and as we always emphasize when folks come to the TSAC meetings, you know, there's. There is a lot of responsibility of the individual crossing the street, you know, you can't just assume because the flashers are flashing that. That cars are going to stop, but, um, you know, it's, it's hard for kids to understand that. So, um. You know, we're, we're, we also discussed maybe having some sort of big educational thing at the school. Um, you know, just really teaching kids about crosswalk safety and that sort of thing. Um, but, but that, that'll be coming down the road. And then, uh, the other piece too is. Um, the, uh. Garden Club, huh, uh, wants to do some work on the, on the Center Island. Um, you know, they want to put some pavers in and they want to. Um, well, essentially they want to put some pavers in to make it with, what they think is going to be a safe zone. Uh, basically because cars come up and their trucks come up and, and run over that, the curbing. Uh, but, uh. Anyway, I, I guess Allison Sailor was in there the other day and, and she actually sent us a picture of a. Where a truck came over. Um, so they want to put like a three to four foot. Strip, if you will, um, around the outside, you know, pavers of some sort. Uh, they'll have to go to Hiscom, but, uh, at the end of the day. You know, we were talking about this the other day. You don't want it to match exactly, right? You don't want pavers, pavers. You don't want it to. All blend together because that might be problematic. But, um, you know, that's something that, that, you know, will probably have to come to us for approval. Um, and not necessarily a financial approval, but, um, you know, it's, it's the work and the roadway. Um, and then the last piece that, uh, that, the folks wanted to, um, bring up again is the stop sign at the intersection of. Church and school. So, uh, that intersection, it's got, it's three-way, right? Because, uh, um. Church is one-way, but, uh, it's got two stop signs coming up. Church and coming down school, but it doesn't have one going. From the, the center to, to the school, right? And, uh. You know, we, we've had, I guess, what? A couple of months now of, of school and, and at least a couple of weeks of full-time in session. Um, and, uh, you know, I drive that almost every day, not quite every day, but almost every day. And, uh, you know, I, I don't see any traffic backups, but what I, what I do see is a lot of confusion at that intersection. Um, and, you know, we were talking with Vanessa Maroni, she's, um. Uh, she's going to be on the committee now. We actually have to appoint her, I think, but, but the school has, uh. Uh, Jim O'Shea has asked her to participate in these, uh, traffic and pedestrian safety. Committees now as a, as a school individual. Um. And, uh, and just a variety of other folks that have said, you know, it's confusing, right? So people stop, some people don't stop. The people that have to stop think the, the people that don't have to stop have to stop. So it really creates this mess. In the morning, um, and in the afternoon, you know, I mean, it's not really an issue, obviously, when there are many cars going by, but, um. But, um, uh, the committee did want to bring up the idea that, um. We, we do want to put a, a stop sign there. We think a stop sign would be a, a good idea. And then the other piece that went with that was the no-through traffic from, I forget what the hours were, seven to nine. That would prevent people from cutting up. Uh, school or, yeah, up school street off of West, no, Church Street off of Westford School, church? Yeah, church, okay. Church Street up of, up, up across Concord, um, off of Westford, up across Concord. And then down past the school. There is a significant amount of traffic now during, it just, it's just jam, right? Because you've got so many people trying to do pickup or drop off. Um, you know, draw our pickup. Well, actually pickup may even be worse now than drop off. Drop off seems to be a bit spread out. Um. But, uh, but, you know, the hope is that that no-through traffic will keep. You know, the, the commuters from going that way. Chief, is there anything or Tim, anything you guys want to add?
Yeah, we just, we will put that sign, um, on Westford Street, so it starts right there.
Hmm, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because I guess the idea would be that if people are coming off of Concord, right, they're, they're likely going to the school, you know, not too many people necessarily cut up that way. So. So, yeah, so, yeah, I'm just something to think for the next agenda, you know, if if, um, uh, maybe to put it on the agenda to vote on it and, uh, you know, we can get, I I the signs should be fairly inexpensive, but.
Well, if you send a report, then we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Recommendations are.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can pull that together.
Okay, anything else? Alrighty, let's move on. Uh, approval of town the warrants. Barney's been busy. Spending our money.
Yeah, let me pull it up here.
Next time, Barney, don't spend it all in one place, okay?
Yeah, you know, if we disagree with any of that, you're personally liable.
Don't scare her, come on. Signing, then you'll have to go in.
That's right, you're the, yeah.
Well, you know, I, we signed that stuff the other day, the the bonds, right? And and out I came, you know, I went in, I was a good citizen, went in with my own pen. And I come out, I was the last one assigned. Peggy goes, did you sign in black pen? I go, yeah, he said. She's like, oh, she goes, well, too late now. Nobody told me.
Yeah, they they searched around for five minutes to find a a blue pen.
Blue pen, yeah.
Well, I ruined it at the end.
That's okay. I'm sure you don't know, but it's an, an original signature and they had enough people on it already, so.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
All right, can I have a motion to approve warrant twenty-three twenty-one?
Pro moved.
Second.
All, uh, roll call.
Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Me, I.
I have a motion to approve warrant twenty-four twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Me, I.
Motion to approve twenty-five twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Me, I.
Approved. Warrant twenty-six twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Me, I.
Unanimously approved. Thank you. Approval of minutes.
I move we approve the minutes. Let somebody send in some amendments.
I went through it fairly carefully and I did not find any need for amendments.
I I, there was one and I thought, you know, it just is not worth it, so.
So, so you're you're moving the approval of the October thirteenth minutes, correct?
As presented, exactly.
You. Do I have a second? Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Me, I.
Thank you. Uh, now we need a motion to go into executive session.
Uh, to return to open session?
Not to return to open session.
I move that the board enter an executive session pursuant to MGL thirty-eight. Sub-paragraph twenty-one A, paragraphs two, to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining with non-union employees. Chief Sarrows and Lieutenant Crowe, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining positions and that afterwards the board will not return to open session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Ask a little eye.
Louis, I.
Mo, I.
Me, I.
Thank you. We are now in executive session.